6:00 PM is now in session. Let's see. Mr. Stevens, if you'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
No executive session at this time, however, we will be with the agreement of the committee going into executive session prior to adjournment. School committee members and student reports. School committee chair report, I have nothing to report at this time. Resource committee, Mr. Stevens.
No meeting at this time.
Any questions, concerns? Seeing none, school building needs, Mr. Stevens.
No, no building need.
All right. Any questions or concerns, comments? Seeing none. Policy committee, Mr. Horgan.
Yes, we met this past Wednesday. We went over a few transportation policies. One is before you tonight, 5410.03, the bus transportation and safety policy. Nothing material in the changes to that policy, just what I would call standard housekeeping changes to make the policy adhere to what the redistricting took effect for that for this policy. So that's just to change the policy to be in accordance with that, ensuring that kindergartners are all eligible for busing, which they were, but so on and so forth, putting it all into policy. So all standard there. And then go into the second reading of the homeless policy, the McKenney-Vento policy, and then the foster care.
Thank you, Mr. Horgan. Any questions?
Just a comment.
Yes.
Thank the policy committee for doing a nice job putting those policies together.
Thank you. Student support committee, Dr. Knight.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Personnel subcommittee, I have nothing to report at this time. Executive committee, nothing as well. Student representatives.
On Friday, November 18th, students receive their student IDs and they're expected to wear them after Thanksgiving break. And on Wednesday, December 7th, parent conferences will take place where parents have the opportunity to discuss their child's academic performance and grades for quarter one. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the class wall competition has happened. This is big spirit week happening at Fitchburg High School right now. Today was Adam Sandler Day, so I wore my flannel unbuttoned and went around pretending that I had a Boston accent. Tomorrow is Anything But a Backpack Day. And Wednesday, of course, it's the day before the Thanksgiving game. It's Red and Gray Day. We're having a pep rally. It's going to be awesome. So right now, I spent the last few hours working on my class wall. Every class is working on a class wall. They're having a little competition. It's kind of like a senior art contest. If any of you have been involved with the district for a while, it's a big object of pride. And this is an awesome time of year to be a Fitchburg High School student. Last week, last Wednesday, the Fall Athletic Awards happened at Fitchburg High School. So our fall athletes were awarded with their All-Star Awards, with the MVP awards, and were congratulated for their excellent work. I would also like to congratulate them all right now personally. It was a really great event. There was ice cream, a lot of ice cream. Everyone was really happy. It was a great time and it really helped promote a lot of our other sports as well, not just the main football, soccer, that sort of thing. But our soccer team had a really good season. Our field hockey team had an excellent season. And they were duly honored at this evening banquet. As for concerns, I would mostly like to reiterate the concerns that I had at the last school committee meeting, in particular with regards to the bathrooms. They have, the situation has not changed. Today, for about half the day, there was only a single bathroom open in the entire school. There was, for the first half of the day, there was two bathrooms open, one on the second and one on the first floor. Students are extremely frustrated by this as it can make it very difficult to handle their hygiene and would like to see some sort of staffing or policy shift to open the bathrooms as soon as possible. And other than that, no book bans have happened, which is good news. Nobody's trying, has tried to restrict our learning from the library. And finally, the parking still remains somewhat of an issue, although for the most part, it has begun to resolve as students who arrive there before the main wave of parent pickup can enter through the main entrance, which is much, much easier.
Questions?
Just a quickie.
Yes, Dr.
Eva Tia or Mr. Gallo, what time is dismissal on Wednesday from school?
I would need to check on that. I believe it is, I would ask Mrs. Jarrett.
Early release day.
Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty.
Very early.
What time is the rally?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty. That's early. Rosemary? Yes, Ms. Reynolds.
Thank you. Frank, I have a, I'd like your opinion on something, or just your thoughts on something. This is evidently not compatible with health reasonableness to have one bathroom for open or even two. I think however many bathrooms there are should be accessible. But I'm wondering, what are your thoughts on what's holding up, what is the problem here?
So I think there is a great deal of concern on the part of administration and on the part of adults in the school to attempt to quell misbehavior in the bathrooms by using these hall monitors. And that's, their goal, or the primary goal, I have discussed with administration about this, is in it, this is in an attempt to reduce things like vaping happening in the bathrooms. This originally emerged last year. So my freshman and my sophomore years, there was no bathroom monitors. You could go to the bathroom by signing out on a pass, talking with your teacher, and then signing back in once you came back to the classroom. Now we have to sign in and out of the bathrooms at the door. And this is largely an attempt to reduce, it was originally introduced as an attempt to stop the devious links phenomenon, which is basically where you steal stuff from the bathroom. People, that phenomenon has since passed for good reason. It was heavily punished last year. But now it's mostly to stop vaping, from what I've described, and to stop general misbehavior from happening in the bathrooms.
What thoughts do you have on, or might you have, as to how to solve this problem?
It is a very complicated problem to solve. And I've done, I've done a lot of detail, I've done a bit of thinking on it. I think having our school have a slightly more comprehensive vape education program is probably the most effective way to reduce vaping because the hall monitors are, in my experience, not reducing the vaping happening in the bathrooms or the misbehavior.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. There was some, I don't know, some sounds. What did you say about the vaping?
So the vaping really hasn't reduced very much. There are still kids in the bathrooms vaping, smoking weed. Pretty much every time I go to do my business, there's a vape in the urinal, and, which is pretty disgusting. But it goes to show what's going on in there. There's still complaints about busyness, traffic at the bathrooms. That's its own issue. But there's still complaints about some rowdiness going on. Solving the problem is not a straightforward solution. There isn't a straightforward solution. The hall monitors can help reducing some of the people being in the bathroom for a very long time, but it's somewhat of an imperfect solution because people can just go to the hall monitor, say that they're supposed to be in the bathroom for a good reason, go into the bathroom, and then do the wrong thing in there. It's difficult to keep track of how long people are in the bathrooms. The sign out sheets do work very well, and I think timing people in the bathroom is a little bit inappropriate. But I, the main ways that I would suggest reducing it from a student perspective is to like increase penalties for being caught vaping in the bathrooms, to be, to have a comprehensive vape education program, maybe in the form of an assembly. I definitely incorporate it into health class, I'm sure it already is. And further, sort of, I don't really know how to solve the problems with rowdiness in the bathrooms, people talking and chatting and hanging out in there. I think that that problem can be mostly solved by having just a general awareness of time. If you see a guy, if you see someone who's in the bathroom for 20 minutes, you should probably call them back. But that is up to the judgment of the teachers, and I think that they're the people who know best about whether or not people should be in the bathrooms.
Any other questions?
Mr. Gallo, have you spoken to the administration in terms of maybe working together on some type of agreement that would be conducive to both sides?
We have not. And I think that that would be a really excellent thing for us to do. As I've said, we have not had a student advisory council meeting for the month of November. They're usually the last Friday of the month. This month, it's going to be weird because the last Friday of the month is, we don't have any school. So it's going to probably happen very soon, maybe the first weekend in December. So very soon, I think that that would be something that needs to be talked about. And I think that's a great method to talking about it at the next student advisory council meeting, and I think we could come to a great consensus about it.
Thank you.
I had just one afterthought that I didn't get to. When you say there's only one bathroom open, or however many, two, three, it's insufficient. Let's assume they should all be open and available to students. The, how do you know, how does a student know which one bathroom is open? Because I'm in the schools often and they go out the door and they have to find the bathroom that's open.
They do. That is true. We've actually, that has been a significant improvement lately. It was announced today that the third floor bathroom was closed and there would only be the first and second. The cafeteria bathroom has not yet, has only, I think maybe one day was open this year. And the second and the third floor bathrooms are typically, usually it's the first and the third floor. Today, it was the first and the second. So they usually announce it. But it is true, kids have to go wandering.
Mr. Gallo, this is the second occasion we've had to listen to this issue with the bathroom. Last conversation I had with you was you were going to bring it to the attention of the principal. That has not happened.
This has not yet happened.
Or the school council as well. Wouldn't that be advisable?
This would be appropriate, and I will bring it up in short order.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Approve the minutes from the previous school committee meeting.
I got motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
To approve the minutes of November 7th. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. It is unanimous. Thank you. Approval of the minutes from the special school committee meeting, November 14, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Communications. Any communications? Anyone wishing to make communications?
Just one.
Yes, Mr. Walsh.
Just to remind people that this week from this Saturday, December 3rd, will be the lighting of the lights up at the Upper Common. Festivities begin at 6 o'clock. Santa Claus will be there to meet with children in the gazebo. It's a fun evening, and even if it's cold out, it's a fun evening. So I hope people who are here and people who are watching will be able to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other questions? Or communications, I should say. Next, public comment. Anyone wishing to make public comment? Do we have anyone remote? Seeing none?
None.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak? Five minutes, please. Yes.
Hello, my name is Lauren Mountain. So many, I know many of you in my capacity working with the United Way Youth Venture Program, but I wanted to speak tonight in my role as a parent. So I have two children who are in elementary school, but also with my working with children in Fitchburg, more and more often, it's been coming to my attention that I think we're, we have some issues with the school buses, in particular, some of the behaviors and safety issues. So to be a little bit more specific, first of all, I'm not, I don't want to just point out a problem without also having a solution. And I think that it's a district-wide issue where I know there have been challenges having people who can drive the bus and keeping the buses staffed. And then there are many buses where it's just the bus driver. You know, my kids will get off the school bus and some of the stories I've heard this year of like the entire bus chanting and screaming at the bus driver, you know, harassing him about his hair, kids using obscene language, talking about obscene inappropriate things around little, little kids. It's really getting out of hand. And there was a group of students I was working with this week where they're saying that's where they're experiencing some of the worst bullying. So I know that the capacity to provide oversight for that is certainly a challenge. But I just want to put out there, you know, as a parent, it's certainly more convenient for me to know that my children can get to school and back safely. But I'd also be willing to, for example, volunteer, for my husband to volunteer, for us to take shifts with other parents to at least provide another adult helping hand on that bus, just to try to right the ship, if you will, just to reset the tone a little bit.
Ms. Mountain, I will commit to you that we will, we will reach out to first student. Is Donna still?
Yeah, well, Donna's with us, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. She'll reach out to the management. I don't know what the, what the solution is for that. Stop the bus?
Well, and I don't think that it's.
Kick everybody off?
No, no, no. I think the bus company is doing, I think they're doing a nice job, but I think there's also, there have been bus drivers who are quitting and leaving because it's just, it's too much. And frankly, it's not safe when you've got a bus full of children screaming at you. How are you supposed to pay attention to the road?
Do you happen to know, they must have a policy of some kind.
Can I make a first student comment?
Behavior or regarding?
Yeah, behavior and, I mean, how much does the driver put up with? I mean, there's got to be some kind of a policy, I would hope, that they would have.
Yeah, I think the concern is right now is finding qualified people to drive the buses. I know that they were having a hard time filling some of those positions, and a lot of the new, a lot of the bus drivers this year are new.
But my point is, like, as, in other communities, parents have much more of a role in the school. They come into the school as volunteers, and that doesn't tend to happen as much in Fitchburg. And I just want to put out there, I think that there is definitely a community of parents who'd be willing to step up for something like this.
I, I think that opens up a host of issues.
It certainly could.
With liability and things like that.
It certainly could, yeah.
But, yeah, we appreciate your comments and we're going to look into it.
Thank you.
I can make one more comment.
Yes, go ahead, Peter.
One, if you know the bus, you can report that bus. There are cameras on the bus. So if there are kids bullying on the bus, those cameras can be.
Yeah, and you know, I've talked with the bus company a couple of times. The people are, they're wonderful people. They really are. They're doing the best they can.
It needs to be brought to the principal's attention.
Even the principal has brought to me problems that.
They can, they can look at the film.
Yeah.
And I know, I've done it. And I, I actually took everybody off a bus for a week.
Yeah.
And the parents had, I brought the parents in, had the, you know, it was not, my child wouldn't do that. And I brought them in and let them see the film, and so they could see just what was happening on the bus.
By the way, this is the second school committee meeting we've been to in a row where it wasn't my idea to, for them to attend. They were asking me if they could come and be at the school committee. So they're really enjoying listening to all of this.
You want to become chair? Come on up. Okay.
Be the student rep in high school.
Yeah, there you go, student rep. Yes, and Mr. Gallo will be glad to train you on it.
I will.
Yeah. Superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight is middle school and.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you have another.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't realize that was it.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. I just want to address something that was brought up last, last meeting. It seems like there was some talk about.
Can you state your name?
Oh, Jessica Jacobson. There was some kind of talk about books being banned in a group. It was brought up, and I just want to clarify that, that Mr. Horgan brought it up.
I missed the first part. What?
It was brought up at the last school meeting that there was a group of people that want to ban some books. And I just want to make that clear, that's not what this group wants to do. We are upset that that is how it was presented. And I just want to make that clear, that's not our intentions. And it is a bunch of complaints about discrimination, that when we do get through the right channels, we do want to make sure that it is addressed more appropriately and not just thrown out there like a group of people that just want to ban books because that's not what it's about.
More than one group.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I guess, anyone else wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, moving on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Jokel.
Okay, well, tonight is middle school and high school night for school improvement plan presentations. But before we get there, give you a little bit of suspense. I'm going to ask Mrs. Kelly to come and give a summary of a conference she attended recently out in lovely Sturbridge, Massachusetts on family engagement. So, Mrs. Kelly, take it away.
Yeah, so the Department of Education sponsored a Better Together Strengthening Families School Partnerships Conference on Friday, October 28th. We sent, actually signed up 10 members of our community, some parents, some employees that work as parent liaisons. And nine people were able to go. We chartered a van, so everyone went together. It was really a wonderful experience for many of our participants. A few of the participants came to cabinet one morning and shared with us some ideas that they had and some key points from the conference, predominantly being, you know, the importance of establishing relationships with families and getting to know students on a personal level, how that is the key for parent engagement and two-way communication, and how to maximize that in the district to strengthen those relationships. I did send Mr. Thompson a summary of what I'm talking to you about right now with some links to specific sites on the department's website that concern family engagement, especially their fundamentals for community and school family partnership. So if you want to check that out, it's okay if you didn't share it yet. I sent it to you.
You did, but did you want me to share it here?
No, no, just to email it to everybody.
I will email it to them right now.
Yeah, yeah, no, you don't have to share it here.
Thank you.
But one of the participants, Jennifer Zekelli, who is the parent liaison at Crocker, wrote this lovely summary because she couldn't be here tonight. Do you mind if I read it? I'll go really quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So this is from Jennifer Zekelli at Crocker Elementary School. Greetings, Mayor Deanna Tally, Superintendent Jokel, and school committee members. My name is Jennifer Zekelli, and I am the home liaison at Crocker Elementary School. I'm sorry I am unable to join you in person, but wanted to share my experience attending the Better Together Strengthening Families School Partnership Summit hosted by the Department of Education. It was a great pleasure to attend this summit, and I am grateful for the invitation. It was very refreshing to spend time with fellow colleagues, as well as to meet other parents from districts across the state. We had the opportunity to hear a very inspiring speech from keynote speakers, Deputy Commissioner Dr. Regina Robinson. We also heard from parents and students and had a chance to hear how they felt about communication between schools and families. It was interesting to hear some of their concerns and how they feel they would be perceived from parents, from the parent point of view. We had 37 workshops to choose from and were able to select four of our choice. It was great to share our personal experiences with other liaisons and share some of the successes and challenges we face in our day to day. We all could agree that the work we are doing has its fair share of challenges, but it is also rewarding. We enjoy a very entertaining luncheon with entertainment provided by the Lawrence High School School of Dance Company, which was amazing. During lunch, we heard from Commissioner Jeffrey Riley, who is also a fantastic speaker. Overall, it was a very positive day and a great opportunity to recharge so that we can get out there and continue doing the work we do. We truly are the link between home and school and get to know our families in very special personal ways, many times assisting them as they face hardships such as food insecurity, loss of housing, challenging family dynamics, illness, and so much more. Thank you to the district for giving us the opportunity to get together as a group and participate in this event. I can honestly say I walked away with helpful information and resources and feel more prepared to hit the ground running and assist our students and families to the best of my ability. They deserve nothing less. I really love my job at Crocker and feel honored to serve the community in which I reside and the district where my very own children attend school. Isn't that nice? It was so nice of her. All right, so I just wanted to give you a summary and let you know that positive news.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eva, please.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we get to the school improvement plan presentation.
The school that is first, I think, is.
Memorial.
Longchamp.
Okay. So, Mr. Pierce, if you want to come either sit down or stand up and.
There's just a few slides I want to go over before we get started with all the presentations here. So really, just, again, this is a redo or expansion of the presentations that we gave last school committee meeting where the elementary schools provide an update on each of their schools, again, without necessarily repeating the slides, where the, how the schools performed during the last year's MCAS and what their plans are now based on that data and what actions they're taking with the resources they have. Okay. So again, just as a reminder to the school committee and the school community, this chart here I've shared with the school committee before, showing the percentile ranking of each of our schools according to the Department of Ed's Accountability Ranking System, and really just showing from left to right, the three schools that we'll be talking about tonight are Fitchburg High School, went from ninth to 16th percentile, Longchamp went from seventh to the fourth, and Memorial went from fifth to the 20th. The remaining schools we discussed at the last school committee meeting. And tonight, we just want to talk, we'll, we'll talk about with Memorial, how Memorial's performance has improved going from the fifth to 20th percentile, how when looking at peer community data, schools and districts close to Fitchburg, and also looking at some of our Fitchburg schools, the meet and exceed percentage of, in this case, it's sixth grade English, Memorial scored 43, or had 43% proficient meeting or exceeding versus a school in an abutting community only had 39% meeting or exceeding. So really, I share this just as a comparison to how schools in Fitchburg are doing and can do here. Also, before we talk about the high schools later on, District Finance and Operations Director, Mr. Roach, prepared a summary based on some high school data that he has compiled for several years, and looking at how Fitchburg and other, not only urban, but peer districts performed. So, and this is in relation to the, again, the State Accountability Ranking System. So the schools on the left-hand side of this, of this slide are urban peers. And although it cuts off at New Bedford there, you know, the delta is either red if it went down a number, or green if the school or school district improved in terms of their high schools. So as you can see from an urban perspective, Fitchburg went from the ninth percentile to the 16th percentile. That was the largest gain of any urban high school that Mr. Roach has been tracking over that time period. So I think there, that's definitely a point worth just comparing, again, looking at either larger schools in Boston. Again, some of these schools, I think are, you do have vocational, technical schools included in this list. So it's, so it's a mixing of not only urban high schools, but perhaps also urban vocational, technical high schools as well. And then on the right-hand side of the slide are just some more local, geographically local, high schools and how they've performed. Now, every community is different based on their, their population and demographics and socioeconomics. But again, just as, our goal is to be one of the best urban districts in the state. We, our staff, did a lot of work during, during the last two and a half years during COVID and coming out of COVID. And, you know, I think that's something that we can all be proud of, so. So, Mr. Pierce, thanks for being patient.
And I know, I know to stand, Mr. Mayor, you wanted me to stand tonight, right? So.
Very good.
I learned from the last meeting, so. So what's up on the board right now is you have the district strategic objective commitments, there's six of them. And at Longchamp, we had our school goals that aligned to. there's six of them, and at Long Joe, we had our school goals that align to each commitment. So I'll just go through those very briefly. So, commitment one, so at Long Joe, by 2023, 100% of Long Joe Middle School students will have access to high-quality curriculum, tier-one instruction, and access to support needed to show growth towards outcomes as evident by multiple data points. So again, at Long Joe, we want to make sure that tier-one instruction is available for all students. We have implemented a SPED and ESL co-teaching model to make sure that our, especially our special education ESL students are receiving the supports they need so they can get that tier-one instruction. Commitment two, by the end of 2022-23, academic year, 100% of Long Joe students will be provided with social-emotional support to show growth and the ability to think critically and communicate their knowledge effectively. So again, we've done this by increasing what we're doing in advisories. We've implemented developmental design in advisory, which creates a sense of belonging and welcoming to our students, and we've also added zones of regulation so students have a chance to talk about their social-emotional needs in the classrooms. Third commitment about staff development, so Long Joe Middle School staff will participate in PD that builds their capacity and the school-wide instructional focus. So again, all our PD is based on our instructional focus, which I'll talk about in a minute. Commitment four, again, strategic effective use of all resources. Again, my first action at Long Joe was to make sure that all classrooms had what they needed in their classrooms, whether it was whiteboards, tables, anything that they needed. So that's what we spent the first two months going through each classroom. Commitment five, again, a sense of welcoming and belonging, so Middle School, Long Joe Middle School will build a system to engage students, families, and staff to ensure a sense of welcoming and belonging. So again, like I said, we've already added developmental designs in advisory so students feel welcoming in the school. We've reestablished clubs, the Multicultural Art Alliance, Student Council, gaming clubs, art clubs. We've got our PTO and School Council up and going again. So these are all clubs that kind of went away before, because of COVID, and so we've trying to reestablish all those so students have, again, a sense of belonging to the school. And lastly, community and stakeholder engagement, so we want to increase engagement of our Long Joe Middle School community and stakeholders with a focus on improving communication and engagement of our subgroups especially. So again, we reengage Facebook, Connect Ed, and probably the most important position we added was the parent liaison position at Long Joe, which has been really needed the last couple of years.
Sorry, Mr. Pierce.
It's all right, Mr. Thompson.
Having technical difficulties here, it's my computer. Think I need to buy a new one.
Computer or use the error, Mr. Thompson.
It's the computer, Mr. Pierce.
Or the connection cord here.
Mr. Pierce, I'm looking at the EL, all the results, ELA, school-wide. Do we have it up by any chance?
Right.
Where are you looking?
A page, what is that, page four, five?
He's actually looking at the actual school improvement plan.
Okay.
This... You do, you do a...
I have to dig that out.
Reading diagnostic on iReady?
Yep.
Do we retest before the end of the school year?
Yeah, so the iReady...
Beginning of the year, this, to see whether or not there's been improvement or...
So iReady is done three times a year. So we did the pre-test, or the first test in September, the second will be in January, and then we do an end-of-year diagnostic.
Okay.
So we're able to see how students have progressed throughout the year.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Thompson, I'm just going to continue if...
Yeah, Mr. Roach is going to be on the back up there.
While you're doing that. So the other slide that you cannot see is building on our strength at Long Joe. So really, the, the strength at Long Joe has been in our student growth percentage. So as a school, our math student growth percentage was a 37, which was up 15 points from the previous year. Our ELA student growth percentage was 41.3, which was up 18.6, maybe it's up there, which again, you want to try, try to get that student growth percentage between 40 and 60, that's kind of the field goal that you want to hit. Science proficiency was 22.5, so that was up 11. And you can see our math student growth percentage range was from 3 to 27, and our ELA range was 15 to 22. So we're doing a really good job of growing our students. Where we really have to improve is our proficiency or our achievement, and I'll talk about opportunities of growth in the second column right now. So our first one is our attendance. So before COVID hits, or during COVID, I should say, the chronic absenteeism rate was over 50% at Long Joe. We currently have that at 30%, so we've made some progress with that. The attendance rate was in the mid-80s, and now we have it in the low 90s. So we've made some progress with that. That's definitely been the, my number-one concern, and so we've done, we've added, again, like I said, a parent liaison, one of the responsibilities is to reaching out to families and students to make sure that they're coming to school. We've added attendance meetings, so students who start to creep up on attendance, we bring families in, and we also have MOC that come in that help us to remove those barriers of why students don't come to school. We give attendance prizes, attendance certificates for perfect attendance. So the month of September and October, we had over 260 students with perfect attendance. So that's almost 50% of our students. So it's really the sec, the other 50% that were, yeah, I mean, that's, that's really positive, that, you know, I know we focus on the chronic absenteeism, you know, but we do have, you know, half our students that are coming to school every day. Other things like I just talked about, so student performance on MCAS, whether it's our ELA or math, some things that we've added to hopefully increase the high-quality tier-one instruction for all students and increase the depths of knowledge in our classroom. ESL, we've added a fifth ESL teacher, so our ESL population has increased in the last year, and so we've added a fifth ESL teacher. We've added access/MCAS tutoring, which is about to start on Monday to get our students prepared for access testing in MCAS. And like I said earlier, we're doing a push-in model with co-teaching with our ESL teachers where, so we're not always pulling out the students out of class. They can be in class, getting tier-one instruction with supports in the classroom. And the same thing with our SPED/MCAS performance, again, we have to get, work on getting that up too. We added three more SPED teachers, which get us to nine SPED teachers now. We're going to start MCAS tutoring in January, and again, we have a push-in co-teacher model with our SPED students and SPED teachers. So again, we're not always pulling SPED, SPED students out of the classroom. And lastly, I've already talked about this, we've implemented developmental designs and zones of regulation, again, to help students feel welcoming and belonging, so again, to help with our attendance. If students have a reason to come to school and they feel heard, then they're more likely to come to school. So just trying to remove those barriers. And then the last thing is some key goals and strategies in our school-wide instructional focus, which is at the top. Again, at Long Joe, we're in the beginning stages of creating a school-wide instructional focus, and so it says, "All Long Joe Middle School students, staff, and community members will invest in the Fitchburg Public Schools' core values so that every student will grow into a problem solver who thinks critically and communicates effectively." So again, those are our, kind of our, our big-ticket items. We want to create problem solvers. We want to create problem solvers who think critically, and we want to communicate effectively. And so we've kind of put some key goals, what each, what that's going to look like for students, educators, and the leadership team. So students will think critically about problem-solving and identify solutions while using evidence to support their thinking. Two, accept and learn from their own failures, productive struggles, and again, as a teacher, that's the, trying to get students to struggle productively is always where we want to be at. We want to engage academic discourse respectfully while using appropriate academic language. So that's what we've really been working on the last few weeks, is academic discourse in the classroom and providing strategies for teachers and giving students opportunity to, to talk in classrooms. And again, communicate positively, respectfully with peers, staff, family members, and the, and the Long Joe community. So again, like what Lauren was talking about, trying to teach our kids that no matter where you are, even if on buses, we want to make sure that we're communicating respectively in our community. Educators will be providing opportunities for high-order thinking. So again, if we want students to think critically, we have to give them opportunities to think critically and give them activities to think critically. We want to allow time for students to struggle productively. We want to use data to give students timely feedback. We want to encourage and use academic vocabulary. So if we're expecting them to speak in classrooms, whether it's peer-to-peer, then we want to make sure that they're using academic vocabulary. And then again, maintain a professional and open mindset through the school community where students remain the center of all decisions. So whether you're an administrator or a teacher, when you have to make tough decisions, okay, it should be based on what's best for students. And then lastly, the leadership team will provide opportunities for staff to engage in PD related to the school-wide instructional focus. So if we expect teachers to be providing this opportunity for students, as a leader or a leadership team, we've got to make sure we're providing teachers with the proper training and professional development so they can provide that for their students. We want to also make sure we're providing feedback and modeling, modeling by doing learning walks. So as a leader, again, I want to make sure that I'm going in providing feedback for staff, just like we expect staff to provide feedback for students. I need, and my administration team needs to be providing feedback to staff so they're able to, to better their teaching. And again, we have to allow teachers time to collaborate around instruction, and then we have to create opportunities to examine data and student work related to the school-wide instructional focus. So again, as a leader, we have to make sure we're providing those things for our staff in order for them to provide it for our students. And that is the Cliff Notes version of what we're doing at Long Joe.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions, yes?
As I said at the last meeting, I appreciate the presentations where you talk about where you need to improve, but I think it's just as important when you mention that just about half of your students are there every day. I think that's, it's a good thing to hear.
Yeah, we forget about that sometimes. Sometimes we focus on some of the stuff that we have to work on, and we know that, but there are students doing the right thing every day, behaving in classrooms every day, in the hallways every day, and coming to school every day.
It's one of those things where, I remember when I was teaching those things, you give out 100 questions and somebody marks at the top one wrong instead of 99 right, you know?
Right.
Yes, back tonight.
Yes, Principal Pierce, I thank you so much for the presentation that you did on tonight. I, I see that you've gotten into, into, into a situation that, you know, was not where we want it to be. And based on empirical observation, working with you over at McKay and see the type of work that you were doing there to bring the school from where it was to where you left it, I, I, I believe that you're going to be doing the same thing over at Long Joe also, and I love what you're doing. I love the way how you're talking about you're going to be getting the family engaged, engaging what's going on. You're talking about the attendance of the students, how you allowed it to, with the, the new implementation of what, of what you're doing, now 50% of the students are attending school more, and you're, you're on the right track, and I really appreciate that. And I also appreciate the fact that, that you not only, you know, just say that you're doing things, because I saw you there, worked with you for a long period of time, over the last two years, and I saw what you were doing, and I really appreciate it, and I want to commend you on that, and also that I saw how you, you're, you're doing things that would enable students to become better problem solvers, more creative, develop a desire to want to go to college and remain there. And one of the things that you did is you, you embrace, or you opened the door to allow a person of color to come in into the school so that the students can be exposed to that, and that certainly make a difference. You know, the Commissioner of Education mentioned how important that is, and I want to thank you for that. And, you know, I know it's not where we need it to be, you said it, and we all see it, and we are looking forward to seeing things better because you're getting into a situation that, you know, needs some work, and you, you got the energy, you, you look ready, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our students deserve the best.
Yep, I agree. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just really quick, I'm sorry to pull you back. Parent liaison position, you described it as the most impactful hire you had, it was needed for years. I remember meeting with Principal Shalafou, Craig, when he was the principal there four years ago, and he said the same thing. What kind of impact has it had on the school? Is that a big reason for the success with attendance? What can we do moving forward to, you know, replicate that at other schools?
Yeah, I think it's, it's an important position to have. It allows that one person to be in constant contact with all our families, right? And so we have, we make sure that our parent liaison reaches out to, especially the families that maybe feel, maybe they don't feel welcomed to school for whatever reason, they had a bad experience in school, or, who knows, right? They all come with different issues and just, oh, we only, we always reach out to, to parents for the bad stuff, right? Instead of reaching out to families with, for some of the good stuff. So we try to do that, be proactive, and just say, hey, I'm a person here, if you have a question, I'm the, I'm the contact here. And she's starting to run, she's part of my PTO now, my school council, so just making those connections and starting to work with families on attendance. She, she meets with us for attendance in the schools and so forth. So I think it's just, it's continue to expand that role and strengthening that position.
So you say, you know, she talks to all the parents, but is the real focus of that position to, you know, chronic absenteeism and, and talking to those parents in particular and starting relationships or building those relationships?
Definitely the main purpose of the position. I mean, that's one of our key focuses is attendance. If students are not in school, how can we teach them?
Right, agreed. And just, just to acknowledge too, thank you for the presentation, this is all great, but, you know, the numbers are drastic. We're coming out of a pandemic, you can't measure that learning loss. Long Joe has always been a school that is, that, that struggles, and having 81%, I believe, being, you know, under, below where they need to be is striking. I think it also comes after redistricting, that's a big part of it, so trying to see if that plays a big part into it. And I guess for me, that is something that I'm going to be focusing on moving forward and seeing how it progresses, if there's certain schools that see progress, that, you know, there's going to be new, you know, median lines at, at each school for these different scores, but seeing how they progress going forward, I think that's just important for the entire community to pay particular focus on, especially after redistricting. It just blows our attention. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr., Mr. Pierce...
Everybody just wants to talk to me tonight, all right?
Yeah.
I tried to be quick.
So just wanted to, again, just underscore my colleagues have said, you know, I appreciate the work that you've put in and the time that your staff has put in, and what I most appreciate is the level of expectation for everyone in the building. And I like how you put the expectation on the community members as well. So that means everyone has a buy-in to the vision that the school is going to be able to produce these young people that's going to be dynamic, you know, communicators, they, they're going to, you know, so I really appreciate that. So one of the things I want to ask is troubled areas, right? So what's, what's your, I, I know you're a long-term guy, so what's your, your short-term plan to get to your long-term goal in terms of your most troubled areas? I know we have MCAS issues, you said 50%, how, what's your plan to get to 65, 70 in terms, in terms of your attendance?
Well, I, I think we've already put those in place, so we just put them in place, they've only been for two months, right? So hopefully, when parents see that we're serious about, you know, we noticed that your son or daughter is not in school, and if they're out quite a bit, then you're going to, you have to come in and we'll have to figure out what, why that's happening. So I think they're starting to find out now that we noticed that, and we're concerned about it, and we want to help them. It's not, we're not penalizing them, but we want to remove those barriers and why they're not coming to school, right? So we have to get them coming to school first, and then we have to, once kids are coming to school now, we have to make sure we have great tier-one instruction in the classroom. Because now that they're coming in, we have to make sure that I'm providing my staff the opportunities and the professional development so they can increase what they do in the classroom, right? And then we have to give a sense of ownership to students, so whether that's goal-setting for them, and they have to be, become part of their learning too. So that comes in, in stages, and, you know, so we're still at the beginning of this, we have a baseline, you know, we know where we are, and now we have to move forward from here. Thank you.
One last quick question, Mark. Is there anything that the school committee superintendent can do to help you meet your goals? Do you have any needs?
So, I mean, I gotta, I gotta say, Superintendent, Mr. Roach, Mr. Thompson, all been great. Anything that I have asked for, they've really tried to, you know, whether it's whiteboards in the classroom, or any type of materials that I need, or staffing, so again...
Furniture and everything, you're in good shape.
Yeah, so we're slowly getting there, you know, we've ordered some more stuff, so... Yeah, so we're slowly getting there, you know, we've ordered some more stuff, so they really, you know, those type of things, we're getting them. Now, again, it's about, you know, increasing the instruction time, getting me in classrooms, having more people so I can get into classrooms and give feedback to staff, so.
Well, you're being a little modest here. Put a list together of what you need. He asked, what do you need? Put a list together.
Oh, I do. Well, they've seen a lot of my lists, so.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
May I have a?
Yes, Ms. Reynolds.
As I was listening to you, you're full of energy and vigor and goodwill and let's go. And somehow or other, as I went along, I was thinking, teachers don't get the, does every teacher always have to be, aren't there expert, experienced teachers who bring a great presence to the school? I always feel like you're always, not you, please, I don't mean you, it's a rhetorical you, like, they've got to keep changing and changing, they're skilled in their work. They've been trained. We don't keep doing this in other professions like nurses, we've got to keep training the nurses, and they've got to get professional, and they're going to need this, and they're going to have to change that, and they're going to have, can they breathe? Can they live there? Can they give what they have to give?
Yeah, I mean, they have the toughest job, they're in the trenches every day, you know, but unfortunately, education's changed. I've been 32 years I've been doing this, and it's not the same it was 32 years ago. So we have to change, as a principal, I have to change and adapt and adjust, and they do too. And that's, you know, that's the great thing about teaching and learning, it never ends. And it's hard, it's hard, they have a tough job.
Some things changed, there was a book, and the title was about the teaching, the education, Addicted to Change was the name, the title of it. I'm not sure we always have to change everything, if something's working, and let it work, and let it grow, let it develop, let it mature. That's all I want, just make an overall comment.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. So continuing the middle school presentation, we have Principal Brittany Lavoie of Memorial Middle School, so welcome, Lavoie.
Hi, so at the, you know, the risk of making you listen to a lot more of really the same, I'm going to, I'm going to go very quickly over the first slide, because what I'm hoping that you've heard through all of the school's presentations is that there is a through-line from all of them, whether it's the preschool center, all the way to the high school, you'll notice that we all have a focus on critical thinking because we really do, it is our role for the community and the economy to produce the workforce that, you know, our economy is asking for. So we have to have critical thinkers. And because of that, you'll see that we all have goals that align with the district's six commitments. And so if it's all right with you, ours are entirely similar to the high school, to Ryan Gold, to Crocker, et cetera. So I'd actually just like to tell you a little bit more on the next slide about the story of how we ended up where we are and where we're heading next. So as an assistant principal, I came with the principal at the time, and we had to present data sort of in the same position that Long Joe's in now, and we were at the fifth percentile. And I remember at the time saying that it wasn't representative of who Memorial is and who the community's children are, and that we had much more to offer. I know that that is true of Long Joe, and, you know, we've had a head start in the work, but I'm thrilled to say that recovering from the pandemic, we were able to come out at the 20th percentile this time around. And though, we are incredibly proud of the work that we've put in, we know that that work's not finished. I hope that if you have any theme throughout all of this, is that we know that the community's children are capable of excellence, and we know that it is our role to provide them with those kind of learning opportunities and to keep those standards incredibly high. What I think, I, you know, I love the first slide that Superintendent Jokela provided comparing our city's schools, because oftentimes, you know, we seek to be the best urban school, the best urban school district, but we're really trying to just be a ranking school system amongst them all, amongst our community. And what was fantastic to see was that the quality of writing that came out of Memorial this year was exceeded the state average. So our students are writing better than the average city, the average Massachusetts community. Our seventh graders, they boasted writing scores that were 15% higher than the average state score. Now, the reading is separated into, sorry, the ELA, the English scores are separated into reading and writing. When you combine them both together, we were still just 2% below state averages. So we are becoming much more competitive in the English language landscape for those scores. Our math isn't quite there yet. The last time I was here with you all, I had said that our math department, 40% were absent for the majority of the school year due to illness or other circumstance, and so we had some rebuilding to do. We're still in that situation. We are much more stable than we were. We have highly qualified math teachers in every classroom, but we are building. There is a lot more veteran staff, as Ms. Reynolds was saying, that can build on what's working. We're growing it a little bit more from the onset in our math department, but it is going very well. And you'll notice that underneath, I, and it's difficult to say this, but the average staff member was absent six days last year. That is surprisingly high. That's strong attendance for faculty, given that the average COVID, sort of, the quarantine period was 10 days for the majority of the year, and then turned into five a little bit later. I can tell you that I can maybe name less than five faculty members that I know that did not suffer from a COVID leave at some point last year. So that, it's promising attendance for the faculty, because as Principal Pierce was saying, we can't provide those high-quality learning opportunities without having our educators in the classrooms. The other thing is that from this time last November to now, our exclusionary discipline is down 50%. So suspensions in or out of school are down 50% from last November. That is felt in the walls of Memorial. The school is much more stable, I think, than it was at this time last year. I think kids have settled down and come back and are ready to learn. And that is going to be half the battle. What you'll notice in the opportunities for growth, there's really three themes in this presentation. The first is that our role is to have students in the classrooms that are ready to learn, so we have to improve attendance. We have to have highly qualified educators who are in the classrooms ready to teach, and they have to be armed with really strong lesson plans and learning opportunities that they can execute, right? It's sort of a really simple, three-pronged approach. Everybody has to be there, and we have to be ready to provide high-quality instruction. What we noticed last year was that our ESL performance was not as strong as we had intended. There has been some, you know, some changes to our, in terms of our faculty, we're a little bit smaller than we were previously. But I can tell you extremely confidently that this time next year, we'll be able to say that our performance has increased drastically. So what we've done is we've blended our in-school reading specialists, our Title-I reading services, with our ESL content instruction. Teachers, because what we found is that there is a comprehension of informational text, there's a nonfiction comprehension problem that is really highly impacting our ESL students' ability to pass the access test. That combined with their speaking scores. There's five domains to the ESL test, I won't go through them all with you, but our lowest are consistently speaking and reading. And so we've joined forces with some really exceptional reading specialists who are working with kids to boost those scores. They're running the tutoring, which is a little unusual. And we're also, the entire building has really banded together to make sure that kids have structured opportunities to practice speaking in ways that will grow their performance. And as you can imagine, if our students are working towards English proficiency, and we did not see the outcomes that we were hoping for, that carried over to MCAS as well. Now, as I've said, I am pretty confident, I'm incredibly confident, that we have a plan that is going to improve those outcomes significantly. That combined with, like I said, the math rebuild, it's, you know, we're invested, we have a very strong plan, it's very comprehensive, that I'll go into on the next slide. And lastly, I'll just say that, you know, the district has been incredible with sharing resources for mental health support. Our Tier Two and our Tier Three, the most, you know, severe tier of mental health supports has grown drastically in our building. The volume is incredible. We're still, you know, in a state of collective PTSD that we have to respond to. But the community resources, whether, you know, it be luck or mock, what have you, they've been incredible, and we have a lot of places to guide families to if the needs exceed what is going on in our building. So this is really similar, maybe a different format as to what Principal Pierce was showing, but what we needed to do was to implement an incredibly tight improvement cycle process, which means, our theory of action is that if teachers are armed with stronger lessons that are meeting the needs of the students in front of them, and they feel confident to be able to execute them, and have folks to collaborate with on, like Ms. Reynolds was saying, other experts to come and see and feed off of and help each other grow, that student achievement will improve. What we've done is we've, as Principal Pierce had said, we've cycled all of our lessons around critical thinking to make sure that it's embedded. So as you can imagine, some lessons are just at the recall level. Do you remember what date this event happened on? Do you remember the names of these people? But instead, we're asking about what is the, what impact did the commercialized farming have on the economy, and how does that, you know, so we're trying to get people to think deeper and connect across contents to be the kind of adaptable problem solvers that the workforce needs. And so that is a profound amount of planning that has to go into having these opportunities every single day and every single class. And so what we've done is, we worked really hard on the identity and, on identifying our task. We communicated it with the faculty, the parents, the students, the community, and we said, we need your help. We continue to report out on our progress every week to the community in our weekly newsletter, where we report out down to how much time I've spent in classrooms versus in my office. So what happens is, we have a key look for in every single classroom, and that is, are students engaged in productive struggle? Are they at that growing edge where they're just a wee bit uncomfortable, and they're going to leave this lesson tired because they have tried to, you know, grow the synapses in their brains? And were they able to do that with collaborative discourse? And was it a strong task, or were they asking, what date did this happen? And so what we've done is, we have, and it can't just be done by one teacher in one classroom, this has to be a collective effort to move the entire school forward. And so what we've done is, we've paired up departments to do walkthroughs. Half the department teaches, half of the department goes and watches, and then they come back and they talk about what happened, and then they have some key next step, and then the process continues. So it's constant monitoring and constant feedback and constant going back. Right now, we have 30 teachers, which I think is a pretty strong showing, who have engaged in this process for, you know, not quite December, and we have 24 homerooms. So that means that every single homeroom teacher plus has been involved in some capacity to do this sort of group improvement model. And it's, the students know what we're doing, and the teachers know what we're doing, and we know we're doing, the district knows that we're doing, and we're all working towards the same thing. And we just now need to keep it going, let it grow, and to protect the time. Because, as you know, time is a commodity in schools, and the holidays can get a little hectic. So, I mean, really, the moral of the story is that we know exactly what we have to work on, we have a ton to be proud of, but we can't be finished. And what has to be clear and tight is the model that we use to improve it, because there's, it's too easy to get distracted, we don't have the time, and we owe it to the community to make sure that we're bringing our best.
Principal Dr. Lavoie, did I say that right?
Yes.
I want to say thank you for bringing your expertise and sharing it here with the students at Memorial Middle School, the Fitchburg Public Schools. Thank you so much for doing that. And with all what you just said, I can just anticipate that things are just going to get better, you know? So I want to thank you for being here. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things that I noticed when I went into Memorial, you know, to do my observation, my practical experience and so forth, is the model of co-teaching that took place there at the middle school. You know, you had your head teacher, I went into math, you had your head math teacher, you had your special education teacher, and you also had your English language learner teacher in the classroom, and then I was there. So there was four educators in the classroom at the same time, so students had to be engaged, you know, there was no time, you know, for their eyes to be other places because, you know, they had the support there. Are you still using that model? Do you still have availability for that type of co-teaching at the school?
Yeah, we're still using that model. What came with the rebuilding of our math department was that some of the teams are new together, and co-teaching, if you've never done it, is sort of like a marriage that no one gave you the eye, it's an arranged marriage. So we've paired people together, and we've said, you now have to do the stance and anticipate each other's moves and know how to, you know, make up for someone's shortcomings or how to make them shine. But people don't always get to choose each other. So the adult dynamics of that can be really complicated, but it is, they're experiencing a lot of success, particularly our eighth-grade math classroom has been really shining, because what they're, they're unlocking access to math by making sure that kids can really access the vocabulary and the technical language that gets used, that, I mean, we have students who have just moved to the country this year, who have been in our school for a couple months, and we're learning some serious math concepts. So yes, in short, it's still growing and getting better every day.
Wonderful, wonderful, good job, wonderful. And I just hope that we can get to a position where all the schools can have that model, because it will certainly make a difference in the education of the students. And again, I can't stop saying it, our students deserve the best, all of them. Thank you so much.
That's right, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Principal Lavoie, I want to, again, thank you for your commitment and your commitment to excellence as it relates to, you know, the leadership of your school and your students. What I appreciate most is your transparency about the need for improvement in certain areas. So I appreciate that. That says, we're doing better than we was, but we still have a long way to go. And that speaks volumes, and when a parent can hear that honesty, say, yeah, we're doing okay, but we have no, we can't slow down now, we can fall, we're already behind, so we need to pick up the pace. So I really appreciate that. But I still want to, you know, commend you on the gains that you have made and the gains that you look forward to for your school. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Real quick.
Yes.
Appreciate the presentation. These are great results, but like you said, there's still a lot to work on, there's still, you know, a majority that are not where the state, you know, says they should be, and we're focusing on that, and I appreciate that dedicated focus. I also just wanted to point out and really just thank you for the breakdown of how you I also just wanted to point out, and really just thank you for the breakdown of how you identified the problem for ESL students, that it was nonfictional comprehension that was the problem? Breaking that down into, you know, the tactics that you used, how you approached that, you know, making a stronger curriculum. Well, there's so many, you know, vague phrases and terms that, from the surface, are hard to understand. Breaking that down, as to what does that actually mean? Embedding critical thinking into the lessons, and succinctly, but also clearly explaining just how that works, how you address that problem through and through, you know, relying on the metrics that follow all that, the follow-through and the follow-up and the support staff. It's all excellent. It's thrilling. Like I said in the previous presentation, it's, a lot of it that I think about is redistricting, so a big part of it is that, but a lot of it, you know, attests to, you know, to your leadership and that success. So, all this is great, and if I can just echo Pete's question from the last, what can we do to help? How can the administration and the school board be an asset and continue to help you succeed?
Yeah, you know, the only thing that I can ask for is just the continuation of, I think, what already happens, is the kind of open ears and minds to what's going on at the ground level as we strategic plan. So it all does, because that alignment that you see is the most, is the single most important thing. You know, the research says that the number one most tangibly high-impact thing that schools can do is establish collective efficacy. So that means everybody's going to move forward together, they're going to swim in the same direction. And, you know, Memorial's been lucky enough to have really stable faculty. And, you know, when I asked them leaving last year, which was a difficult year, they said, and I said, "What can I do for you?", they said, "We just need stability." And they have that, and I think that it's showing that that alone, I think, can really, you don't have to start over every year, like you were saying, like, why do we have to start over? So we're able to grow together. Yeah, I'm very lucky for the faculty, because they're super committed, they show up, and it makes the kids want to show up.
Awesome.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. LaVoy. And next up, we have interim high school principal, Tanya Jarrett. Talk about Fitchburg High School, so welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. Like Brittany, I'm going to skip, thank you for skipping to the second slide, so you don't have to hear the same thing over and over again. One of the strengths that Superintendent Jokala did bring up at the beginning of the presentation was just our growth from 2019 with our accountability rating to last year. So moving from the ninth percentile to the sixteenth percentile, which may not seem like a huge growth, but when you looked at that chart that he showed, that we made the largest gains for any urban school in the state. And we were, I think there was only two schools above us in our local surrounding area that scored higher than us. So, keeping in mind coming out of COVID and that experience, to be able for any of our schools in our district to make gains during some of the toughest time in history in education and teaching is a big deal. So it's something to celebrate. Because not only is it an increase, but it's an increase in a tough time in teaching. So that's something to celebrate. Our dropout rate also is the lowest that it's been in the last four years, again, coming out of COVID, that is also a major celebration. So we have a number of AP tests that we've given over a number of years, but what I'm most proud of is our expansion of providing AP Spanish classes, both literature and language, to our students, which many are Spanish speakers in our school. And so to provide a place where they can excel, where in many other classes, they may struggle as they start to learn a language, this is something they can continue to develop their skills. And so there was 19 students that last year that took the AP Spanish tests, and 53% scored at that highest range, which is unbelievable. This was our greatest scores for any AP test that were given in our school last year. So again, something to celebrate. And then finally, our English language learners in math. Over the last few years, we have done a push-in model, where I think, in the past, special ed students have been pushed in, and there's been a lot of co-teaching. There has been more inclusion in co-teaching with our English language learners in math, which maybe happened more frequently at the middle school or elementary level, but not so much when students are coming from other countries in high school, and language is a major barrier. So in the past, we might shelter them a little bit more before they're pushed into regular classes, and that's not been the case for the last couple of years. So despite COVID and all of our experiences, they made some huge gains in math last year, so that's something to celebrate as well. Opportunities for growth, you're going to hear things repeat over and over by school, similar things. And that's attendance, of course. I think our high schoolers really, really struggled with a year and a half of not consistency in school. They had opportunities to work more when they're working remote, and so that incentive of making money not only for themselves, but for their families. The responsibilities of being caretakers for their siblings while parents had to support and provide for their family definitely presented a challenge with high schoolers now coming back after a year and a half of lots of freedom in everything they did. So that's in attendance, and I'll address maybe Frank's, some of his concerns after as well, but I think that plays a role in it. That a year and a half of having lots and lots of freedom, whether it be income, or how my world works and functions, and what I can do, is definitely a huge adjustment for high schoolers to come back. And I would predict that that might be more of a challenge at the high school level than the younger students with less educational background and experience. So attendance, again, is something, like all the other schools, that we need to improve. I would repeat, like everybody else at that parent liaison, that's a new position at our high school. That is a huge benefit to our school, to be able to send weekly letters home to students that are not coming to school, both in English and Spanish, whatever language needs to be sent home, to make phone calls in their native language and connect with parents, to do home visits with our school resource officer. He goes out multiple times during the week and connects with parents, which is huge. And also in the past, before COVID, we had a policy of no credit. So in order to improve, and this was before I was kind of in administration, but to improve attendance for high schoolers, there was something, a policy put in place with no credit. So students that had more than four unexcused absences, that means, like, it wasn't a doctor's appointment, it wasn't a court date, it wasn't anything that could be excused, it's basically, I'm choosing to stay home and not come to school. If they had more than four unexcused absences in a quarter on the report card, even if they passed and got a 99%, they would get an NC or no credit. And so the plan for that, or the logical consequence for that, is meet with your assistant principal and come up with a plan to improve that attendance. And opened up the dialogue and connection with those students to say, "Why are you struggling? And what's going on in your life? And what's making it difficult to come to school? And here's how I can help you get back in track. What can we do? What are some things we can put in place?" It could be as simple as, "Let me get you an alarm clock." Could be as simple as, like, "Let's press your snooze button three times on your iPhone so that you wake up the third time." And so during COVID, of course, we had to get away from that. That wasn't something that we can enforce. But this is the first year getting back to that, and students, like Frank or Tia said, they got the report cards on Friday. Many might be disappointed in the number of NCs that they got, but we are getting back to that high expectation that in order to learn, you need to be in school. And so they are meeting today, tomorrow, before vacation, they're meeting with their assistant principal to come up with a form, with a plan of, "Here's how I'm going to improve my attendance for quarter two. And if I can follow these things and implement these things, then I will get my grade back, and I earn my grade back. And the way I earn it is by coming to school and improving my attendance." So that's something, one of the other things we're kind of working and bringing back with attendance. Achievement, continued focus on high-quality instruction for all students, special ed students, ESL students, in every content area. And that's the implementation of our SWIFT, which I'll go over in a minute, our schoolwide instructional focus, which allows a culture of staff members to come together no matter what you teach, and focus on one high-leverage point that's going to help students move forward. And then mental health supports, I would also say that that has been a huge need coming back from COVID, with a year and a half of unstructure and the trauma that some of our students have felt. It's definitely saturated, and you feel it on a day-to-day basis at the high school. The number of students that are coming with addictions is something in my 22 years being in Fitchburg I have never, ever experienced. And some of the other trauma that's coming with them, you know, feeling depressed and hopeless. I think it's always been there, but I think the scope and the saturation is beyond something that we've ever seen in education, and that's not just specific to Fitchburg High or to our city. I think that's a nationwide concern. So we do have Tier One supports in advisory, we have advisory classes every other week. We have a curriculum called Purpose Prep, which deals a lot with social-emotional curriculum. And then we are also using that to address, as Frank said, a great idea is to focus on some education for students that are struggling with addictions. And so students that are caught vaping or smoking, it tends to be more of the vaping and the marijuana versus the tobacco, is part of their consequence is to take a class, a course, which usually takes a couple hours through our Purpose Prep. So it's not just giving them a consequence that doesn't change behavior, that doesn't change behavior for somebody that's addicted, but it's providing them that support. So they're taking that course, they're also assigned to a clinician who would meet regularly with them. We meet with the parents, they might get also, like, some additional counseling outside and working with guidance counselors to provide an additional counselor outside of our school building. One of our focuses this year for mental health is Tier Two. So Tier One is just those supports that we're getting in the regular classroom, all students are getting that. All students are getting some social-emotional curriculum through advisory. Tier Three is our most struggling students, so kids that might be coming back from hospitalization if they've tried to commit suicide, kids that just need a ton of one-on-one support. We have four clinicians, we have a spot right now for a fifth, we're having trouble filling that spot, which is more support than we've ever had at Fitchburg High, so that's huge because we do need all of those to provide the need that we currently have. Coming out of the pandemic, there were so many students that needed that one-on-one attention, that made it very difficult for those clinicians to meet the need on a daily basis, that students were in crisis. So this year, we're really trying to move up the number of students that were getting that one-on-one support, because it's not sustainable to that Tier Two, the middle of the line, they might need some support, but they don't need daily counseling one-on-one. And so we've implemented some groups with clinicians and counselors by grade level this year, so once a week, they're meeting in a small group. They might be talking about anxiety, or might be talking about coping skills, and what do I do when I'm feeling upset, or overwhelmed, or depressed, or stressed? So I'm looking forward to seeing the outcomes of that, because it's not sustainable to have every student that has deep needs to get that one-on-one with five clinicians. So we're looking to kind of, not only provide peer support, but try to meet more needs in a small group. And then, can you go to the last slide? Thank you. So our schoolwide instructional focus is, Red Raiders are present, prepared, and positive in order to think critically and communicate effectively, and you'll hear some similarities with the other schools. It's really important, especially coming out of COVID and in our times in society, that students think critically. And I think often, if you turn on the news or in society, people don't think critically. They hear something and they rush to a conclusion, and they don't get evidence, and they don't listen to another perspective or another side. But whatever the first thing is heard equals facts. And so more than ever, I think it's very important for our next generation of students at the high school to learn how to think critically, and that means listening to other perspectives. That means gathering facts. It's very hard for our teenagers right now when they get something on Snapchat, or something on Instagram, or something on Facebook. Whatever they read for them is reality, and that's fact, and that's not the case. So it's important for them to learn about finding evidence, and finding accurate evidence and accurate information before rushing to a judgment and making that decision. And besides the difficulty with our society in doing that, I think teenagers also struggle with that, with slowing down and not thinking emotionally, or thinking through just one side, but like, thinking through. And so that's really our focus at the high school. And not only for the students, but also for the adults as well, is that we all think critically and think through the information that we hear and process it before we make our judgments. So here's a sample of a picture of our staff. Unlike Brittany, we have 34 new staff members out of about 125 this year, which is a huge amount. So it's important for our culture to kind of build some connections in the sense of community with our staff, and I think our SWIFT does that. So we have T-shirts for our staff that has our instructional focus, we have it all around the building, but it's really important for them to have a single purpose and to be working together on something, no matter what they teach. And then on the right-hand side and the bottom, critical thinking in the classroom, this is part of our professional development. So weekly, all teachers meet, mostly by content area, to learn new things, and we're going through this book on critical thinking, which gives them not only the why about teaching critical thinking, but actually hands-on things that they can try in their classroom. And again, it's bringing that culture together, we're all working and learning the same thing at a time. And then the left side, just like Brittany and Mark have talked about, walkthroughs in our district is a big focus. It's important, not only that teachers are learning and growing, but they're getting feedback from us about what's going well, right? And what might need to be tweaked or improved, and they enjoy that feedback. So the left-hand side is just a half-pager, that when we do admin does walkthroughs each week, we're checking off those boxes of things that we see the student doing that's high-level critical thinking, or we see the moves that teachers are making, and we're giving that right away to them before we leave the classroom, so they're getting that immediate feedback. A quick plug, and then I want to address Frank, and then I can answer some questions. So we have many unfilled positions still. So a couple things coming out of COVID, right, is the gaps that students have, it's the emotional needs that our students have that are immense and enormous. It's also staffing. So I probably still have four or five staff members that I have not hired, beyond the 34 new staff members that I've just started, many that might not have experience. So we're definitely in a different time in education, and you really cannot compare, and I've been in this district, like Mark, for a while, what we did 22 years ago. We can't even compare what we did two years ago, because it just, the landscape looks very different. So, when you ask, you know, what we need, continued kind of advertisement to fill these positions, because they need, we need another clinician, we need a math teacher, we need a science teacher. And so we continue to advertise, but I also think, in our work with Fitchburg State, we need to continue those partnerships with local universities for educators to come and want to work at Fitchburg. Okay, so Frank, let's, we're going to talk about the parking. And here's where I think it's important to get like a full picture. We actually talked about the parking issue at our last Student Advisory Council. So he did bring that one forward, and we were able to talk as a group. What's nice about our Student Advisory Council is a mix of representatives from every single grade, so it's pretty evenly balanced. We have a bunch of ninth graders, a bunch of tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, with all very different perspectives. And so it was a great opportunity, and it was a great meeting to practice our critical thinking, what our SWIFT actually is. And so I had Frank and another senior present their concerns about senior parking. And then I said, "Okay, so you're going to present? I'm going to present kind of the admin perspective, and then I want to open it up to the outsiders, because there's many people there that are not emotionally attached, whether it be for me or for you, right, in our opinions." So to be able to hear their response. So we have about 30 seniors that pay for a parking spot and are able to decorate or paint their spot, and it's reserved for the year, so nobody else can park in their spot. We have about two more than 200, but about 200, I have to actually count, more than 200 student drop-offs every morning. Whether it be for bus issues with behavior on the bus, or just cold, or they don't want to stand at the bus stop, we have many parents that are dropping off. And so what was happening at the beginning of the year is, the traffic line would be backed up almost all the way to the rotary in the morning. Students walking would cross- Students walking would cross three different crosswalks to get to the side of the building. And so every time a parent would try to drive, they'd stop once, drive, stop again. And it was just backlogging everything. In addition, I think in life, adults and kids will always look for the easy way or the shortest route. That's just human nature. And so at the beginning of the year, they were directed to go to one entrance at the far end. So it would kind of move the traffic along. But human nature is to not do that and to drop them off at the quickest spot, which would also backlog the traffic. So after seeing that for about a week, we can't, we can't do that. Students were not getting into the classroom until 7:45 into the building. School starts at 7:30. So we made an adjustment and all we adjusted was saying what we said at the beginning of the year needs to stay in place. The expectation is you're going to enter at this entrance and not at any other entrance. We cut the time by 15 minutes. Students are now able to get in the building and into class by 7:30. The challenge was the understanding for seniors that a reserved parking meant front-row parking. And so having that conversation about what reserve means and what front-row parking means. And it made them have to shift and have to walk a little bit farther in order to accommodate the 200 parent drop-offs that were happening. But it was a great conversation, a lot of critical thinking. And I think even Frank and some of the seniors were like, oh yeah, like I didn't realize that. I didn't think of that, right? Because sometimes when we're in our own little world, we think of ours and we don't always see the bigger picture. So it was a great critical thinking lesson and conversation. We talked about what are some ways that we could adjust and adapt? And sometimes they, that's not their job to see the bigger picture of administration and leadership and, and what that looks like, the impact on other people. So that was a great conversation. He is, he is correct. We haven't talked about the restrooms. The last meeting was about the student parking. And actually, the, the younger students, the freshmen and sophomores, got a little frustrated with the seniors because they said, is that it? You're just mad that you have to walk a little bit farther? Like, that's not a big deal. And so they, they struggled a little bit with the rationale. And part of the question at first, one of the freshmen was starting to get a little upset and they're like, you mean, you have to pay for that? And if you have to pay, yeah, you should be able to go in wherever you want. And the conversation was, no, you don't have to pay to, to be a driver that parks in the parking lot. You have to pay if you're going to decorate your spot. So then the student was like, so I don't understand. What are they complaining about then? So they can park anywhere? Yes, they could actually park closer to the entrance if they want to do. But I guess for me, the lesson learned for, for the seniors and coming out of COVID is to look at different perspectives. And I might not always get my way. Students might not always get their way. There might be a compromise and that's give and take and that's life and that's part of critical thinking. I think the struggle the most right now is the seniors have had more, more years of not normal schooling than they have of normal schooling. So the last full year, unfortunately, that Frank and T have had was freshman year, they had one year of normalcy in their, in their high school education. And now they're coming back their senior year. That's really hard for them. Like that's, that's tough. And so the adjustments to some of the rules and changes that maybe they had as freshmen look a lot different pre-COVID to post-COVID. And I would say the bathrooms is one of those things. And so pre-COVID, with a lot less trauma and addiction and fighting and some of the issues that we're seeing, didn't exist on the scale that we now have post-COVID. And so it's my job as the principal to ensure safety for all students in my school. And I can't have kids saying, miss, I can't use the bathroom during the day. I have to wait till I get home because it's not safe because I'm afraid there might be a fight or there might be somebody vaping in there. And so while I agree with, with Frank that there still might be students vaping, that's not something we could ever control 100% with student behavior. But I can say without a shadow of a doubt, the, the oversight of that has drastically changed not only the bathrooms, but the culture in our school. The amount of fights that were happening in the bathroom or the amount of vaping that was happening in the bathroom is not occurring this year. And so it is a challenge. It's a struggle because it looks different and there's more rules for kids for two years that haven't had as many rules being at home. So it is an adjustment, but I think it's an adjustment worth having. And last year, I remember the same complaint was brought up and our two friends on the school committee volunteered and they came because the same complaints were being made that there was lines and bathrooms were not open. And you both volunteered graciously, thank you so much, to come and visit and actually manage one of the bathrooms. And I remember asking you at the end, is this what you thought it would look like? Did it look like this? Because what was kind of being presented was not what you saw. So we do have some staffing issues every once in a while. Today, for instance, we had two staff members out. And so that did impact one of our floors being, the restrooms being shot. That is not a day-to-day basis. That is if we're short, short-staffed. So we are down one hall monitor, security person, and we had one person out today. Actually, we had two leave for family emergencies. So we were short-staffed and that's the reason. Questions for me? Do you want to come back? Do you want to come back and monitor the bathrooms for us?
Good, you call me. I will come. I, I enjoyed seeing with the students. But I think I got an easy post. I think I got the good, the kids that would probably not be likely to start a.
They're, they're all great kids, but when you're monitoring, it makes a difference.
Anyway, yeah, truly, if you called me, I would be happy.
All right. Be careful if you offer, I might be calling.
Going out on a limb.
Yes.
Principal Jarrett, I want to say welcome to the new assignment that you have at Pittsburgh High School. And I want to wish you the best because I know it's not easy. And thank you for being here for our students. They really deserve that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes. I'm thrilled to hear not only what you talked about critical thinking, but it's taking place in the middle school as well. I, I think it's important to not just remember facts and names and dates, but to, to question an event and say, well, what if they did this? Or, and even if, even if what you ask isn't, I guess there is in that case a right or a wrong answer, but you're looking at a perspective. If I was in that situation, I would have done this because of one, two, and three. And I think it's, it's really good that, that students are learning that in sixth, seventh, eighth grade and continuing into high school and preparing them for when they get to, whether it be community college or a four-year school or even.
Even a trade.
In trades, in your work, that you, you look at, at something and present it to either your teacher or to your employer. What if we did something like this to improve this situation? And I think learning, as you said, learning how to present in a situation and a discussion so that you see all sides, then you realize, okay, maybe my idea isn't the best, but part of it could work. So I appreciate all three schools incorporating that into their curriculum. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Question. When you give an NC, do you also give the grade?
The grade doesn't show on their report card.
But they do get the grade.
They won't get the grade until they earn their grade back, until they finish the plan of improving their attendance, then they get their grade. So say if it was a 99, but right now, if they had more than four unexcused absences, they'd get an NC, no credit. Then quarter two, they work with their assistant principal on a plan to improve their attendance. Once they've completed that, they get that 99 back on their report card or their transcript.
Okay, well, I won't have a discussion with you now, but I don't think you can tie a grade to, to attendance. You can try, you can tie no credit, but not the grade.
Right.
If a student earns a grade, they get the grade, but you also can give an NC for no credit.
Yeah, it's like holding this, it's like a placeholder while they're working on it. It's not taking away the grade.
As long, as long as somewhere down the line, they can get that grade, even if they don't get credit.
Yep.
Thanks again and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the work that you all do too. Appreciate it.
I don't mean to hold you. Ms. Principal Jarrett, I'm sorry. I should have spoke up more sooner.
Am I missing something? Are you doing this or am I?
No, I'm just slow. No, you're good. I'm just trying to think.
The second time it's happened, eh? I mean.
All right, all right. No, sorry. Just trying to figure out how to ask. So there's a lot to dig into here. I guess, but what's on the top of my mind, there's 34 new hires. That's a big number. You know, we're in a lot of different metrics. We're back on, not back, you know, getting back to close to be on track from the 2020 and 2019 numbers, which is great, which is exceptional and a wonder. But to continue that success, you know, all the new teachers need to be incorporated into the game plan quickly. I saw that one of your goals is to get them up to date on the various support systems that they have access to, to request from emotional support, emotional, social support and other types. What are we doing to ensure that these 34 teachers are continuing to be successful, feel heard? And, you know, one of our biggest problems here is staffing across the country. So with 34 new hires, retention of those 34 new hires is, you know, the second, is an extremely important goal. So what are we doing to focus on that?
Absolutely. Because the, the staff you hire this year or over the summer looks very different than the staff you would have hired pre-COVID. And so you're, you're getting a lot of staff with little to zero experience that are willing to work in an urban district and want to go into education, but don't necessarily have the background. And so that requires a new way of thinking and providing, like you said, that support in order to retain teachers. So that's through mentor, mentorship. We need to have a strong mentorship and that's something that has been implemented from the district this year. So every new teacher has been assigned a mentor that's meeting with them constantly. In addition, Becky Mackey oversees our mentoring program, is meeting them with them as a whole group to go through a book and provide some, some mentoring and training. And that's really huge. Like, we need that. We couldn't, we couldn't retain these teachers without that. I think our coaches, our instructional coaches at each level building, we have a math and an ELA coach. They also, when I talked to our literacy coach today, he said the majority of my first two months have been helping all the new teachers, just providing them like the basic support that they need. And that needs to be continuous all year long so that they feel supported.
Did we have trouble filling those mentor positions?
Not at the high school level. I'm not sure about the other levels, but no. And that's, that's kudos to our veteran staff who, who want to help our, our newbies.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Jarrett.
Thank you, Tonya. And batting cleanup is our softball, former softball coach, Goodrich Academy Principal, Alexis Curry. So welcome, Alexis.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I know you've heard a lot about data in numbers and SWF. And I'm going to get right to some, a lot of that, but in a little different way because as you know, Goodrich is a, a very small, much smaller alternative school. But going to our data points, I would say that I think the greatest thing I can announce to you tonight in terms of our school improvement is we have come back to a place of 200 students. We have come back to a restored culture after a time of COVID and after a time of the pandemic. And as we talked about, kids being away for a long time and students that are typically chronic offenders of attendance and not all overachievers in the beginning anyway, hit by the pandemic, sent them backwards. But I'm going to hearken back to something that Rosemary said and my colleagues said. And I will tell you that I do think that efficacy is important for schools, but I think that the most important thing for all schools is to stay with what we do know. There's a lot of changes afoot. We are doing all the curriculum work that the others around me are describing, but we're also sticking with the foundation of our school, which is respect, relationships, and, and kind of getting done the work and responsibility. So our students, I'm happy to report, we're very proud of our MCAS scores, which had our students sailing through at nearly 100% this time through. And I've said before, we don't make any bones about the fact that we've all taken advantage of what the, the COVID did in terms of aiding students and skills that were set and those bars being dropped a little bit. But our students worked really hard despite that and got great numbers and did the work. But more importantly, they're showing up to school. They're doing what they're asked to do. They're being respectful. That doesn't mean that there's not a lot of, of back and forth. It doesn't mean you don't see me out there acting a little crazy sometime, but that does mean that we're getting to where we need to be. I kind of knock on wood, because I always do, to say that our school has had yet another year without a single fight, without, without any police, without any problems. So while they're doing their MCAS, they're showing up to school and they're being respectful. And they're, you know, you're taking 28 communities and throwing dropout students from 28 communities into the same building. And somehow, although the rest of America is struggling to do it, they're working together. They're all very different. They all have plenty of opinions. They all have plenty of energy and plenty of enthusiasm to share their opinions, but somehow they're doing it respectfully. So we are engaging and working on whatever's going to get us there academically. It's a little different because as it says in our, in our screen, we also look to individual, unique abilities. We break down our classes into exactly what we need for that quarter. So if we're in quarter one right now, we have a whole different population than we had in September. Next week, we'll start 70 new students. We will familiarize ourselves with those students. We will know who they are. We will know what they need. We will call their homes every night they're absent. We will chase them down. They call it stalking. I, I call it engaging them. But we will find them and we will get them there. And it's, it's not, it's not easy. We have a smaller number. We have a lot less teachers to deal with. I always tell my colleagues, I don't stand here and say I can do something you can't because I can't do what you can do. I like my little community. I also know it has advantages of being small, but it's tight-knit. I have a group of teachers that are passionate, that show up each and every day. And we're working towards those MCAS goals. We're doing more walkthroughs. We're doing everything we can to make sure that we teach critical thinking and at the same time, we demand respect and we demand that the community take care of each other. And it is still a community and about that, I'm very proud. So it took a lot to get back from the pandemic. It was no easy feat to get kids used to coming to school together again and behaving in some sort of way that conforms with everything we're asking them to do. Are they trying to vape? Sure they are. But I might be old and I might be fat, but I'll find them. But I tell them, I'll find you. And we do. But it's a lot easier. It's a lot different when you got eight rooms and eight bathrooms. And we do find them and we do hunt them down. But they're a great group of kids that come with all kinds of difficulties. We have 20 that we've inherited this semester that will be with us one, maybe two semesters, may never take a math and all need to get across the math MCAS stage still. We inherit those kinds of kids all the time. We have our struggles with scores. We have our struggles with getting them to where they need to be. We have our ELL struggles. But again, we're doing the best we can under some difficult circumstances and they're all doing their very best. And when they're not, we'll hold them accountable and we come back to it. Our teachers work together. They mentor each other. They take care of each other as a community. And as such, I think the kids see that and they act in accordance with that. Again, they're not perfect, but I will tell you, you can go there any day at any time and you can walk through those halls and I welcome every one of you. And you will see order and you will see kids working and you'll see everybody giving an effort. If you don't make an effort, we take care of that. So again, we need to, what do we need to do? We need to keep doing all of that. What do we need to do better? Many things. We need to, we need to get better at data. We need to track. I had someone come in and say, oh, you call attendance every single night. Well, how do you know that works? I say, didn't you go to graduation? They still crossed, they've crossed the stage. That means they came. Well, that's not a measurable outcome, right? So the world's of measurable outcomes now and we're working on that and I'm working on that. To be honest with you, we put all the effort we have and every bit of our hands and time into the kids. And we have to begin to utilize the resources being afforded us and do a little bit better job at managing those outcomes and marketing and giving you those stats that you all want to see. But in truth, the state doesn't give us those stats because it's not the stats we're always measuring. But do they all need to show up for the MCAS? They sure do. They did, 100% of them. Do they need to pass the M course? They sure do pass the MCAS and they sure did. Will they all pass every time? Uh-uh. Pandemic's over. That's not going to happen every time. That's not going to happen every time. But we will keep fighting. We keep breaking courses down. We use our teachers, our special education teachers to co-teach, and we will get better all that as well. We need to track our attendance better, not to just say it improves, but to know exactly how it improves and how. And we need to address, still attack those students that we aren't hitting through chronic absenteeism. But again, we will do that. We have a new clinical interventionist, and we do a lot of outreach. We always did a lot of outreach, to be honest, because all of our teachers act as that. But the clinical interventionist provided us was a wonderful tool for us. We never had one. We don't have a school resource officer. We didn't have a clinical interventionist. Last year, we had a family home liaison that was incredibly effective. Couple of kids that were chronic attendants actually got parents, family meetings, and parents have switched jobs. My buddy, Mr. Pierce, opened the door for me to tell you that. I recently picked up the phone in a panicked morning, said to Mr. Thompson the other day, "Mr. Thompson, you know how I really wanted that clinical interventionist?" And he said, "Yeah." He said, "Remember how I promised you I'd give up my parent home liaison to get it?" He said, "Yeah." He said, "I think I made a mistake." And I said, "It was a bargaining tool, but now I need both." And he said, "Write it to me. Write me a note. Tell me what you need." The school system has given us everything we've asked for. We are going to have the first desks in our classrooms ever since I've been there in my 16 years, not ones we carried in, not ones we borrowed, not ones we got from someone else in the back of their dumpster, but our own. We're very happy about that. We're happy about the direction of the school. I'm still fired up to be there. The teachers are still fired up to be there, and we're just going to keep doing the best we can do and improve whatever it is you tell us. It's not up to snuff. That's my speech. That's what I have. If we can go through the slides, I'd be happy to go through any of them. I will tell you, our engagement has been great. We've had events. You saw our marine graduation. The community came out to help us. All of you helped us. You saw our public dinners. They've been wonderful. And I'm proud to say that, I don't know how long Mr. Jokel could tell you, but I'd say about four weeks ago, five weeks ago, we had a parent affair, and I think it was just under 85% of our schools showed up, parents and students included. And that just doesn't happen. So we're going to continue to try to engage. We're going to beg for a little more to try to get us into the households with a family home liaison. And again, we're going to do a better job of documenting what it is we're doing exactly over there and measuring it so we're not on the island and people, you know, can see exactly what we're doing and the state can measure us the way they'd like to. But all in all, we're still doing exactly what we were doing, and we're happy to be back at it. Any questions?
I'll go first this time. Just talking about teaching the whole child, right, it was something we talk about a lot, but, you know, at the end of the day, you can't measure a lot of the metrics that go into teaching the whole child. And especially at Goodrich, you know, there's certain metrics that the state cares about that affect our funding, that matter, but when we're talking about teaching the whole child, that's just not something that you can measure. And that's not to say that there isn't an incredible success happening throughout the district, but especially at Goodrich in regards to that task itself. So although you can't measure that success and you can't show us the stats that show you're teaching the whole child, you know, we see that and we recognize that and we really appreciate that. And that said, you know, it's very anecdotal and staffing is hurting everywhere, but I know it's been, not a particular, but you haven't been an exception to that challenge. Could you talk about that, how you overcome it? And then, again, to echo Pete's question before.
Well, I think it's the same way, the staffing pattern, although we are down a sped person right now, and I worry about that because, as I tell Mr. Jokel, even though it's about teaching, it's also about a city and what we bring to it. We're one sped person down, which means we can't accept any other special education students. We have 66 for two teachers. So that means more can't come in from out of district or in district, so that we worry about. But our staff, I would say the magic recipe is the same as the students. We're a family. We're a tight-knit unit. We cover each other. We take care of each other. My dad is in hospice right now, and for the first time, I'm not in that building 12 hours, 14 hours a day. Some of it's from home and some of it's in it, and they just cover each other. We just take care of each other. They watch each other. And because of that, they show up every day. And I think that we're able to retain people because they're pretty happy there. That doesn't mean it's not hard. As I tell the key, it doesn't mean it's not hard, doesn't mean it's easy, but it's not hard. But I'm just blessed. You know, I have people all the time say, "Oh, my God, Alexis, what you do with that?" And it's not what I do. It's not what I do. It's what those teachers do. We have a dedicated group of teachers that literally will go in a half hour before school and pick someone up two towns over or come back. And I've just been blessed to keep them, and I hope I can keep them for a long time, or at least for a few more years. They're really good for the city, and we bring in help where we need it. We were struggling in math. We have a few people struggling math, and we have 20 kids who have to take the math MCAS that just arrived at our door and need it by March. We called, picked up the phone. I called Mr. Perry. "Mr. Perry, I'm desperate. You got to help me. Remember how you mentioned you love these alternative kids?" He was there. So we call in people from...
He's going to you, though.
Huh?
He's only helping, but he's not leaving my school.
That's what you said about Ms. Gogan as well. How you doing? Did you ever get Ms. Gogan back? Anyway, the truth of the matter is, not just our school, other schools, my colleagues, everyone reaches out to help us, but it's just that kind of a community. Our 35-year-retired special education teacher is teaching kids reading in the back room, volunteering her time. It's just, it's a nice culture. It's a beautiful thing, and I think that's why they stay. I do. It's hard work. It's a lot of hours, and I buy them a lot of food. That's all I can tell you.
Works all the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Principal Curry, I also want to say thank you so much for all the work that you do, that your staff do, that your staff is doing in order to do the best they can to meet the needs of the population of students that work with you, that you work with, and how you all strive to accommodate their various learning styles, you know, where they could not succeed at other places, and then they come to you and you receive them with open arms. And I've been over at your school and I see what you're doing, so I certainly want to commend you and encourage you. You know, I know you're going through with your dad right now, but I am just, you know, hoping that you continue to have the energy and what it takes so that you can continue to move forward and keep doing what you're doing because that is awesome and it's wonderful. And, you know, not to be too long, if my colleague, Mr. Stevens, asks you for what do you need in order to succeed, please put a list together of things that I know I saw that you need that you may not want to say. Don't be shy. Just give him a list.
Thank you. I'm not usually that shy. Thank you, Dr. Knight. And don't worry about my energy. I got it. You're okay. I promise. Any other questions? Yes?
I make a comment. I get the feeling that you see the students as human beings, as people, rather than as data.
I see the students as I would my own. I try to treat them like I would treat my own child.
Well, that's the engagement that human beings really need.
And everyone there does. And as someone else said, you know, they come from places where they weren't successful and they come to me where they can. Well, it's different when you work in a school and you have 150 classrooms and you have to try to find the kid and find the help, where I can go to the end of the hallway and say, "Mrs. Marama, help that kid math." It's a different thing. So I don't want to say that someone else couldn't do the job and we could do it. It's a different job, and we have different tools, and we have different expectation and smaller numbers, but it is a group of wonderful people that get it done, and I do appreciate the comments. But again, we are much more fortunate than others in some ways in what we have to deal with just in sheer numbers.
Well, I want to come back and go to your school.
Well, feel free. Everyone's welcome. Everyone's welcome. Anything else?
Thank you, Alexis.
Thank you all.
Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Jurg. Okay, tonight, we only have one donation. Mr. Jurg?
Yeah, so we're actually, night, 22-211. That's a great one. It is a donation of 138 Thanksgiving baskets with an estimated value of $5,520. The donations were coordinated. Luisa Fernandez did a lot of the legwork behind this, but coordinated and supported by the City United Church. So again, it's a request to accept that donation.
Okay, and tonight on the policies to be approved, Mr. Horgan?
Yeah, we have three policies. There's the second reading of the homeless McKinney-Vento policy and the educational opportunities for children in foster care. It's the first reading of the bus transportation and safety policy, and that's what's before us tonight. Are we going through the readings, Mr. Chairman? Are we going through the readings of them? Or are we, do you, any discussion that we want on these?
Any discussion? Do you wish us to go through the readings?
I do on... Yes, I do. So the people can handle.
We'll go through, is there, last, did you just want the two, the McKinney-Vento policy and the foster care policy?
Yeah, well, it's just a matter of policy. If we have, if we're supposed to have readings, I'd like to have readings, so.
For second reading of the educational opportunities for children in foster care, policy number 5119. The purpose of this policy is to ensure the educational stability of students in foster care. Educational stability has a lasting impact on students' academic achievement and well-being, and the school committee is committed to supporting all efforts to ensure that students in foster care have equal access to high-quality, stable educational experiences through high school graduation. Irrespective of the location of a foster care placement, students in foster care will continue to attend their school of origin unless after a collaborative decision-making process, it is determined to be in the student's best interest to enroll in and attend school in the district in which the school resides in foster care. Enrollment of students in the district where they reside in foster care will take place immediately upon such a determination. The district has designated a point of contact for students in foster care. The district and the point of contact will collaborate with the Department of Children and Families, the DCF, to ensure that students can access transportation and other services to which they may be entitled. Best interest determination. Decisions...
I think that's all you read is the policy and not the regulations. That's my, was always my understanding.
Okay.
Not the rest of it. It's the policy.
You understand just the executive summary?
Just the summary. That's what you read.
Thoughts on that from the committee?
If you have precedence for that?
Yes. Yes, the, like, the best interest determination, that's, then that's part of what's done by the superintendent and the committee that handles it. But it's the policy that we're...
I believe that's part of the regulations portion of the policy, though, Pete. I think that's actually still part of the wording of the policy, although I appreciate your intention.
Mr. Horgan, what's contained in the package?
Yes.
Is this, this is including the changes that were made by the committee, subcommittee?
Well, the foster care policy is all new because this is the new designation from the Department of Education.
But that's this?
That's what I was reading.
Okay.
It's all new wording. There's no draft that we started.
There it is. Ms. Reynolds?
And the McKinney-Vento, I'm not, you know, the marks of changes weren't shown here.
Yeah.
But this was a standing policy that was amended, so it's not all new wording.
And that is a, that is a federal program, is it not?
Yes, it is.
It is.
Famous case. So I'll continue with the reading, then?
Please.
Okay. Decisions about whether a student in foster care should continue to attend the school of origin should be made collaboratively by DCF, the student as appropriate, the student's family and/or foster family, or if different, the person authorized to make educational decisions on behalf of the student, the school and district of origin, and when appropriate, the local districts where the student is placed. Best interest determinations should focus on the needs of each individual student and account for unique factors about the student and his or her foster care placement. Every effort should be made to reach agreement regarding the appropriate school placement of a student in foster care. However, DCF will finalize the best interest determination if the relevant parties cannot agree on the best school for the student to attend. The district can seek review of DCF's decision by utilizing a foster care-school selection dispute resolution process established by DC and DCF. Decisions made through this process are not subject to review. To the extent feasible and appropriate, the district will ensure that a child remains in his or her school, in his or her school of origin while the disputes are being resolved to minimize disruptions and reduce the number of moves between schools. Transportation. The district of origin must collaborate with DCF on how transportation will be arranged and provided to ensure that students in foster care who need transportation to remain in their school of origin will receive such transportation while they are in foster care. Transportation options may include using Title I funds, establishing regional collaborations among districts, coordinating with existing routes for transportation, seeking help from foster parents, et cetera. Absent other agreements between the district and DCF, the district of origin is responsible for providing transportation to and from the school of origin. Immediate enrollment. If it is in the best interest of a student in foster care to leave the school of origin, the student must be immediately enrolled in the district in which he or she resides in foster care. During enrollment of students in foster care, DCF representatives will present the district with a form indicating that the student is in foster care along with a state agency identification badge. If the student does not have immediate access to immunization records, the student shall be permitted to enroll under a personal exemption. Students and families should be encouraged to obtain current immunization records or immunizations as soon as possible, and the district liaison is directed to assist. Emergency contact information is required at the time of enrollment, consistent with district policies, including compliance with the state's address confidentiality program when necessary. After enrollment, the district will immediately request available records from the student's previous school. Attendance rights by living in attendance areas, other students' assignment policies or intra- and inter-district choice options are available to students in foster care on the same terms as families who reside in the district. Accordingly, the district will provide transportation services to school in a manner comparable to the transportation provided for all other students in the district. Legal references include Every Student Succeeds Act, Fostering Connections to Success, and Increasing Adoptions Act of 2008. This is a boilerplate policy from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. That's all she wrote. Moving on. The homeless student policy. The McKinney-Vento Homeless Education Assistance Act. As required by law, the district will work with homeless children and youth and unaccompanied youth, collectively homeless students, as well as their families or legal guardians, to provide stability in school attendance and other services. Special attention will be given to ensuring enrollment and attendance of homeless students not currently attending school. Homeless students will be provided district services for which they are eligible, including Head Start and comparable preschool programs, Title I, similar state programs, special education, bilingual education, vocational and technical education programs, gifted and talented programs, school nutrition programs, summer programming, and extracurricular activities. Homeless students are defined as lacking a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence, including: sharing the housing of other persons due to a loss of housing, economic hardship, or similar reason; two, living in motels, hotels, trailer parks, or camping grounds due to the lack of alternative, adequate accommodations; three, living in emergency or transitional shelters; four, being abandoned in hospitals; five, living in public or private places not designed for ordinarily, ordinarily used as regular sleeping accommodations for human beings; living in cars, parks, public spaces, abandoned buildings, substandard housing, transportation stations, or similar settings; and seven, migratory children living in conditions described in the previous examples. Students remaining in schools of origin. It is presumed to be in the best interest of homeless students to remain in their schools of origin, for example, the school that the student was attending at the time he or she became homeless, or the last school the student attended prior to becoming homeless. Homeless students may continue to attend their school of origin for as long as they remained homeless or until the end of the academic year in which they obtain permanent housing. For homeless students who complete the final grade level served by the school of origin, the term "school of origin" shall be, shall include, shall also include the receiving school in the same school district educating students at the next grade level. Homeless students are entitled to transportation comparable to that provided for all of the students attending school in the district. The district will transport students who are sheltered or temporarily residing within the district to the student's school of origin. For homeless students attending a school of origin located outside the district in which the student is sheltered or temporarily residing, the district in which the school of origin is located will coordinate with the district in which the student is sheltered or temporarily residing to provide the transportation services necessary for the student. And these districts will divide the cost equally. Formerly homeless students will find permanent housing mid-school year, will continue to receive transportation services until the end of the school year. Guidelines for distance of transportation are, for one way, up to 45 minutes for kindergarten and up to one hour for students in first through 12th grade. Students enrolling in district where sheltered or temporarily residing, parents or guardians may elect to enroll homeless students in the school districts in which the student is sheltered or temporarily residing, rather than having the student remain in the school of origin. Enrollment changes for homeless students should take place immediately. If homeless students are unable to provide written proof of their shelter or temporary residence in the district, the homeless liaison will work with the family seeking enrollment to determine homelessness. Information regarding a homeless student's living arrangements shall be considered a student education record and not directory information. Records containing information about the homeless student's living arrangements may not be disclosed without the consent of the parent or satisfaction of another student privacy-related exemption. If the student does not have immediate access to immunization records, the student shall be permitted to enroll under a personal exception. Students and families should be encouraged to obtain current immunization records or immunizations as soon as possible, and the district liaison is directed to assist. Emergency contact information is required at the time of enrollment, consistent with district policies, including compliance with the state's address confidentiality program when necessary. After enrollment, the district will immediately request available records for the student's previous school. Attendance rights by living in the attendance areas, other students' assignment policies, or intra- and inter-district choice options are available to homeless families on the same terms as families who reside in the district. Accordingly, the district will provide transportation services to school in a manner comparable to the transportation provided for all other students in the district. Dispute resolution. If the district disagrees with a parent or guardian's decision to keep a student enrolled in the school of origin and considers enrollment in the district where the student is sheltered or temporarily residing to be the student's best, to be in the student's best interest, the district will explain to the parent in writing and in a language that the parent can understand the rationale for its determination and provide the parent with written notice of their right to appeal the district's determination to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. During the pendency of any such appeal, the student should remain enrolled in the school selected by the parent or guardian, receiving transportation to school, and access to other available services and programs. The Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's advisory on homeless education assistance contains additional information about educating homeless students in the appeal process. This advisory is available at the following link. Homeless liaison. The superintendent shall designate an appropriate staff person to be the district's liaison for homeless students and their families. The district's liaison for homeless students and their families shall coordinate with local social service agencies that provide services to homeless children and youths and their families. Other school districts on issues of transportation and record transfers and state and local housing agencies are responsible for comprehensive housing affordability strategies. This coordination includes providing public notice of the educational rights of homeless students in locations such as schools, family shelters, and soup kitchens. The district's liaison will also review and recommend amendments to district policies that may act as barriers to the enrollment of homeless students. The liaison shall ensure district staff receive professional development and other support on issues involving homeless students.
Thank you so much. I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead. Yes.
Could you please, see, this has broken down into two. Formerly was all under one, and the legislature has now treated these distinct categories, homelessness and those under foster care. So, Mr. Superintendent, could you tell us the number of homeless students that we have in Pittsburgh and the number of students in foster care? And do we have a liaison to these groups?
It actually, Mrs. Kelly had actually provided that at the subcommittee meeting when these policies were first read. I don't recall the numbers offhand, but I remember her presenting the pie charts and the exact numbers of how many there were.
Do you have an approximation?
Mr. Roach?
Yeah, I think it was 120 and 120 approximately.
120 homeless, roughly?
And about 120 in DCF.
And about 120 foster care. And who is the liaison? Do we have an appointed liaison to, same liaison to both groups, or more than one?
It's Eva Kelly.
Mrs. Kelly.
Eva Kelly is a liaison to these groups. Thank you so much, and thank you for reading that.
Walsh? In the McKinny Vento policy, there were three footnotes that looked like there were active links.